Okay, we'll call this meeting of the Stoughton Select Board to order. And if you will join us and if you are able to stand and join us in saluting our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all and good evening, those of you who are joining us live in the hall and those who are joining us remotely. So I will read our meeting notice, the Select Board Agenda, Joint Hearing with the Board of Assessors, December 2nd, 7:00 PM, The Great Hall, 10 Pearl Street, 3rd floor. This meeting is virtually and via Google meets. In compliance with Governor Baker's Declaration of the 16th of 2021, extending certain COVID measures, adopting during the state of emergency and extended until April 1st, 2022, this meeting is conducted both in person at the Great Hall, Town Hall, and virtually during via Google meets for those who wish to participate remotely. Due to potential technical difficulties in virtual meetings, it is requested that anyone wishing to speak and attend the meeting in person or to send any comments to the Select Board by 4:00 PM in the office of the day of the meeting. If at any time during the meeting there are audio issues, the virtual portion of the meeting will be closed and the in-person meeting will continue. It does have the Google meets address here, the phone remote, and the PIN number. The meeting may be recorded by SMAC cable television and may be broadcast live and may be livestreamed at www.stoughtontv.org. A recording of the meeting, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceeding will be posted on the town's website and/or SMAC as soon as possible after the meeting. If live broadcast or livestreaming is unsuccessful, times approximate and the items may be taken out of order at the chairman's discretion. So with that, I will... We're having a joint meeting and Mr. Jutrus, I see, looks like you don't have a quorum.
Are you skipping Susan Cullen?
No, I just wanted to be able to open up the public portion as well. I'm not going to do that. So we don't have a quorum, so I would imagine this kind of... We can't open the public hearing with the assessors without the assessors being here. And was there any indication to you by your colleagues that they were not going to be here tonight?
Mr. Zoll should be on remotely. Mr. Hill should be in person.
Okay.
I believe we're also listening for a 7:30 meeting.
Okay.
So you can't be able to open until 7:30.
Okay. All right, so with that then, I just want to make sure it's not seeing them, so I'm glad I don't... Mr. Zoll, if you could just identify it if you're in virtually, if you could just let Okay. Don't hear him yet there yet, but again, for 7:30, so, okay. So if we'll come back to that. So on citizens' requests, and I will say citizens' request, not comments, but yes, Ms. Walsh.
Where should I go?
Oh, all right, well, we don't have a table. Why don't we just take the microphone over to Cynthia, if you don't mind, Steve. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street. Can I be heard?
Yes.
Well, I guess my request is that you send kudos to the Visiting Nurse Association yesterday and today. The nurses went out to the homebound to administer COVID boosters. This is vitally important to these folks. Even though they're homebound, folks do come in to administer to them or provide food. So they do have a very limited exposure to others, but still, in their delicate condition, it means more trouble for them than it would for those of us who spend our days amongst the crowd. When I called yesterday, our Thanksgiving rivals, Canton, provided the booster vaccine to our VNA. So I think we should, despite losing the game, about their losing the game, my request would be to thank them for their generosity to the seniors and other homebound members of Stoughton. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. Madam Town Manager, can you hear us? Can we hear you?
I can hear you.
There we go. Oh, that actually is very nice audio for us. Could you do me a favor and do just that, is to draft a small letter of recognition that I can sign on behalf of my board members and to thank Janice and her staff, as well as a note to the Select Board for the Town of Canton that I could sign as well and thank them for their kind gesture to the residents of Stoughton? You know, okay? No, I think that, thank you Cynthia, I think that is, I wish I had known that. I mean, that is some of the things we seem to lose in this mix, and that's the difference on what, you know, we can get done, especially for our elderly, and in this case, people that can't get out to the Council on Aging and get out on their own. So it's, that's the added service. That's what makes Stoughton the great place that it is. So thank you very much, Madam Town Manager. All right. Any other citizens' comments? Hearing none, I will go to Select Board comments. Mr. Cavey?
I have no comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Roberts?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to provide an update. This is on REMAP, the Racial Municipal Action Plan Grant, and also being a liaison to CPC. Well, where we left off, we were going to have partner with the school to have a career fair, and that's to encourage people, encourage the students to get in the pipeline, major in various forms of subject matters that would encourage public participation, public administration, and what have you. Basically, there are other positions besides being a teacher or an accountant in the government and the schools. So Principal Juliet Miller partnered me with one of the counselors, and it's a go. It's on. We're going to have a town government career exploration day in the early spring. Also, so we're trying, we'll work together later to gel the process and the plan. Also, for the CPC, there are some, they would like some students to be involved in town government, get more involved in the CPC. So what they are considering, the counselors considering, talking to the student council, talking with the Energy Efficiency Club, and talking with the historic, the history department to become either student members or maybe have an intern at the CPC, so provide a service. And then the conversation went on further to maybe have a MLK activity, that's sometime in January. So we'll be potentially, this is potentially, working with one of the commissions here in town and also on the school side, and hopefully that will develop into some type of event that will be shown on SMAC. So town side and the school side will be working together on these initiatives. So thank you.
Great. That is, that is great news. And to see something on the mentoring and to try and get a message out to the youth of our town. When we talked about this earlier, I had mentioned that I did this years ago, didn't go very long, but had a 15-year-old sit here with me at a meeting, and I was explaining the votes. And I don't know if, maybe I scared him away at that time, but it was great. And it's great that you've been able to put that together with such a quick amount of time, so it's, you know, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Gito?
Nothing.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gito. All right. And the chair has nothing. I'm sorry, Mr. Carrara. I'm used to looking over and he's not here. Mr. Carrara, do you have anything under selectmen's comments?
I have nothing, Mr. McRuskey.
Okay. Sorry about that, Scott. All righty. So with that, we'll take up the town manager's comments, and I think, that's what I said. I was looking, just I saw your head nodding at the same time. But with that, we do have still a couple of minutes. Robin, and, no, I think it's premature, so you have no comments at all then, right?
No, nothing for me.
Okay. All right. So with that then, we're still running a little ahead of our 7:30 meeting, but to introduce that we have now appointed a new Director of Veteran Services, Sean Buttrica. And Sean was the gentleman that got the highest amount of votes at our most recent Select Board meeting, and the board voted to offer him the position if he was willing to take it. We had a subsequent meeting with him in the town manager's office and with HR and the Veterans Affairs Secretary, and the meeting was flawless. Sean was on his A-game with everything. He answered some questions that were put to him, you know, in deeper knowledge of his understanding of the state programs. He was very good on the federal, and all the questions that were asked of him, he answered to above everybody's satisfaction. He looks forward to coming around. He's already done some homework, and he knows where he's going to be going to introduce himself and to set up some meetings. And Sharon was, you know, the Veterans Affairs Secretary was just phenomenal assistance during this process as well, for those of us that don't know this like they do. And I thank Sharon for all her efforts to assist us here. So Sean will be starting, and I think he'll be able to be introduced at town meeting because he'll be starting on the 6th. And we look forward to welcoming Sean here personally and having him a part of our team. And again, he was excited. He was excited about the opportunity and really has a good plan moving forward, so.
Dr. Grimm, raise your hand.
Okay. Dr. Grimm?
Just quickly, Sharon, our Veterans Agent Secretary, actually found that on Monday, the show was going to start at Town Hall, there's actually a statewide training for veterans agents, and it only happens a few times a year. So he actually agreed on Thursday to go to statewide training, and he's going to make every effort to join us at Town Meeting that night with a disaffirmment. We're not sure how late to go, so if we do not see him, if we do not see him do that night, it will be shortly after. But we could miss an opportunity to send this for training on his first day or...
No.
Good idea.
Yeah, great idea, Robin. Great idea. Yeah. Okay. So with that, I have still five minutes before we go into this meeting. Would you rather just take a two-minute recess or what we may be able to do is, and I don't think it'll take, it's not going to be that quick. Robin, would you like to maybe touch, or take out of order the reallocation of the Opera funds and get that done? Or do you need more time than...
Yeah, absolutely. That'll be very quick. Several months back, I came to the board and I indicated that we had approximately 1.5 million ARPA money. I requested from the board 450,000 for school in Canton Street, 950,000 for the sewer project, and 100,000 for PPE. The board supported that with the caveat that it is going to be more than 5% different than any use that I give back. So what I am coming back and requesting, the 450,000 school in Canton Street project came in at 416,500. I request to use that 33.5 and the 100,000 for PPE for an alternative use. We do not need money for PPE, we are requesting. The alternative I would like to use that funding for is our VNA revenue were off because people were not using the visiting nurses during COVID, so our revenues were off. So that identifies when the next year's budget will need subsidy. Because we feel it's kind of a one-time walk revenue, we don't mind doing a one-time subsidy to fill the gap. That would fill approximately 130,000, that's all, next to 13,000 around, that would be 143. And there's a second offer that we're using for the fire station, and we have plenty that we can take 100,000 from that and totally fill that gap. But the one that the board had originally voted on, the one we would take and vote for requirement in the act, was to reallocate that 100,000, the remaining 33.5, two industry projects, just for the board to go to allow me to use that money to offset those lost revenues because of COVID.
Okay. Any questions to the board?
What, I know that the VNA was not able to go to a number of locations that they generally did. Do you know what they generally did and what the situation was last year in terms of the numbers?
Our PRDM nurses did not do this much work necessarily going out where they would make money, but we did utilize a lot of those nurses during that time to make phone calls for contact tracing and whatnot, so we still did pay some of those nurses to do other duties. We just didn't generate the revenue. So we're looking, things are beginning to tick back up and start to look back to normal. Our nurses are going back out. Over the next few years, we're going to have to look at how we end and generate the revenue in any way. A lot of it has to do with credit funding reimbursement. But for now, to offset that loss back, we're looking to do it now. But those PRDM nurses were part of the group that did a lot of the contact with...
No, I...
...money for that. I'm getting some...
I understand that they had other things to do. I guess what my question was, their normal work was curtailed because of the COVID, and I guess I'm wondering how much that has been curtailed? How many visits were not made? Just to get a sense of what the activity was this past year in regard to their normal work versus the year before or the year before that? So you might not know the answer to that right now, but maybe you could get it. Thank you.
I certainly agree with that, there is a chance.
All set? Okay. And before I forget and make a mistake again, Scott, any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Through you to the town manager, on these funds here, have we used any to include air handling in the Town Hall, the management of air?
There was prior money, there was a whole prior 1.5 million that had been allocated to CARES, this is the ARPA. That CARES money, we have worked on air quality. We also had FEMA money that goes toward that as well, so FEMA is a whole separate part of money, Superman monitor that. Qualit is working on increasing air circulation in all of our buildings. I can find out specifically what was done at Town Hall, but millions of CARES money stayed on the track, that is, 1.5 million, five million, another $11,000, and we need to use it toward air performance purification as well. I'm not sure specifically if FEMA does this for that or CARES, but we did dedicate money to that, and we continue to do so.
Thank you.
I think it was, we did what's been done at this point, I'm happy to get that through.
All set, Scott?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Ms. Roberts?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any questions, Dr. Grimm, just to reiterate the questions that were answered, you know, outside of this meeting. This reallocation of the Opera money does not interfere with our projected dollar allocation for the fire department.
No, it does not. What you're voting on tonight meant nothing related to the fire, and the other 100,000 that we'll use to bridge that gap is coming from the second Opera funding, which was going 100% toward the fire, but it will not impact that $21 million number in any way. It, in fact, we, I think that poses 6.8, we're budgeting about six for the fire department, so that 100 will not impact the project at all.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Cavey?
No questions.
Okay. So that's all set. And so, well, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the request.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gito, second by Ms. Roberts, to support the reallocation of Opera funds as presented by the town manager tonight. So on the motion, Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. Okay. Now it is now 7:32, and we have our public hearing. We have the Board of Assessors here, they have a quorum, and I think what we'll do is, yeah, there's two seats there. Lou, Rick, if you want to come up as well, there's two microphones, if you grab the two seats there.
Yeah, these two right here. Easy on the cameras.
Just grab the mic. Okay. And do we have Mr. Zoll remotely? So with that, Mr. Jutrus, would you like to open your public meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So being 7:33 on December 2nd, I call to order the meeting, scheduled meeting of the Board of Assessors for our classification discussion with the Select Board. Vote in favor?
Good deal. And as the Chair of the Stoughton Select Board, I'm entertaining a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gito, second by Mr. Cavey, to open the public hearing. On the vote, Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Okay. So I will, Mr. Jutrus, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Everyone should have a packet with the various material that we'll discuss and go through for tonight's meeting. It was part of the selectman packet, so it was available online, and any changes or revisions, we'll make sure is listed on the assessor's page as well. At this point, 2022 fiscal year was our certification year. All of the properties, classes, looked at, valuation based on sales and other statistical information from calendar year 2020. We've submitted all the values to the Department of Revenue. We received approval for the preliminary information, so we can have the classification hearing, and we are waiting for final approval of our growth, the LA 13, and the final LA 4 as well, so we can truly vote, or you can vote, on shift and other related items. So tonight, we will be able to review all of the material, discuss any of the questions. I know some of the board members have sent some questions to us, and we'll look to answer those, and then discuss additional options at the end. So as many know, 2020 was a wonderful year for a variety of reasons. From the market perspective, for sales of houses, things were very good. Residential average prices rose by almost 10%, 9.7. Commercial rose about 4.1%, and industrial values increased by about 8.5%. Overall, the total value of our properties in town increased by over $405 million. Residential has become a little greater portion than it was in years past, about 80% of the total breakout within the town. Just under 11% for commercial, 5% for industrial, and close to 4% for personal property. So commercial, industrial, and personal property together is just under 20%. Inside of the packet, we have information for the board that details growth on the LA 13, details the values and the breakout by section on the LA 4, residential, single family, multifamily, commercial, and so on. We will touch upon those and give details in the areas that we can. Couple of things that we are here for to discuss, and then for the Select Board to determine at a future meeting, is whether to shift anything from the residential class to commercial, industrial, and personal property. This year, based on all the reviews so far, we have the option within the town to shift anywhere from 1 up to 1.65. Variety of factors that come in, obviously, the increases in the values on properties drive that, along with the change in philosophy and methodology for some of our personal property accounts, the utilities, Eversource, NSTAR, and where we have this blended value of what they report as well as what we had audited, and to come up with this new value for it. That has proven quite beneficial for the town. The value on those three properties in and of themselves increased over $10 million for this current fiscal year. Not something that we would have seen without this blended rate necessarily. That practice will continue every single year. We have to audit those properties individually. There is some expense for it, $6,000 or $7,000, but that value increase far outweighs that amount of cost. We also present to the board options, if they so choose, to deal with a small commercial exemption and a residential exemption. So as I mentioned already, overall, part of this meeting is to discuss the potential shift option between residential and commercial, industrial, and personal property. It doesn't change the overall amount of funds that the town can receive through the taxation, it's just that redistribution. This process here does not determine the tax rate. When all the forms are filed, then we have a calculated rate. We don't determine how much money can be raised. That is already been done by town meeting in the prior year that set the budget. So this is part of the process to go through and allocate the funds, get the revenue for other things that are tax-related, that are not sitting in unknown or excise or other local receipts. There are four different classes: residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property. We have the overall discussion briefly of a tax levy, just to remind everyone that we start off for a levy from last year's number. We add in the two and a half, we add in new growth, and we can come to our new levy limit. We have debt exclusions in the town, so for the high school project, that amount is added as well, and that becomes our actual levy that we can tax and allocate. We have some details on that as we go through as well, as to just an update on what that calculation is from a dollars and cents perspective for the high school override. We've always discussed and presented to the board the options for exemptions or exclusions. The residential discount is one of those items. Currently, there's been a change to this where we can have up to a 35% discount for owner-occupied properties. This changes the burden within the residential class, so that a lower-valued home gets a credit, and that's put more on to the higher-valued homes. It, again, doesn't change the total amount that we're collecting. It does change the tax rate, but there's a calculation that goes behind to figure out what the credit is, where it's applied up to, and how far we go. So that could be anything from... So that could be anything from 1 to 35%. People do have to apply for it. We have to calculate what we have for owner-occupied residents in single-family only, and then work from there. That is something that we have not done in the past, that would extend the approval of the tax rate. So if it's something that the Select Board wishes to do at any time, we would need to have some discussions ahead, work that in sort of a year prior, grab that information, and then be able to use that for the next future year. We also discuss every time a small commercial exemption. Again, this targets one specific section. It has no impact on residential or personal property. It has no impact on industrial properties. It is just commercial. There can be a 10% shift offset, and there are requirements that they have to be part of the state's workforce development. They have to have a value of less than $1 million. They have to have less than 10 employees. And if they work under a different name, a DBA, then that parent company must be listed again on the workforce development. We don't have a lot inside of commercial falling inside of those categories. So again, it really doesn't, you know, suit us well in this community. But again, if it was something that the board wished to try to do in the future, there is work ahead of time to try to validate those numbers, go through that process, and have that available for the next year. Now for the forms themselves, and where we get into the impacts. We have no changes from what we submitted in the preliminary approval. So there's an LA 13 form, and we have nothing on that end. The 13, not the 13A, represents potential growth in all the classes for the year in question. Again, we have submitted this form. Two of the members have signed it. Kathy has submitted the process. The Department of Revenue has begun their review. They had questions today that were brought back. A few adjustments have been made. And again, we expect for this, that we may have that approval tomorrow. The LA 13, the new growth, is a factor in determining the maximum levy. So until this particular item is finalized, we have to close the public hearing, continue to another meeting before we can take that vote, because that could have a significant change in what's available or not available. Right now, we are in the $970,000 to $980,000 range for growth. This is above what was part of the budget process for a new growth estimate. So we have met that requirement and exceeded it by what I believe in the end would be around $180,000. So that's additional funds for this year. That would eventually, you know, fall out, be part of free cash, be certified, be available for future allocation. It's also then in future years, becomes part of the base, and then you have your 2.5% automatic calculation on that, which then allows you to grow the base from that perspective. We've also included a copy of the LA 4, which gives you the parcel count and all the different class codes, showing our total value for residential and our total value for the town. On page 18 of the packet, we now have our average values. So for fiscal year '22, with all the sales that what happened in '20, because January 1 is our cutoff date, single-family dwellings increased to an average of $428,258. So over $37,000 change from the previous year's average. We've also noted on here condominiums, $287,000. Two families, $434,000. Three-family, $478,000. Commercial, $1,052,000. And industrial, about $931,000. So hearing all those averages, what does it all mean? We added, again, almost $980,000 right now as a projected number for new growth. This is added to the levy, will be raised and appropriated, and available for our uses, and any excess would be in a future year. We've had new growth in different classes that totaled over $44 million, but that was not necessarily even this year as it was in years past. We've had a higher amount in the personal property than we've had in residential or commercial or industrial. We have a very small, finite set in those utilities that is really driving our growth numbers. And that is a difficult thing to calculate. It's a difficult thing to anticipate. It is what they are doing with their infrastructure and what is reporting, and it is very volatile from year to year. And as a comparison, I pulled, you know, the last three sets of information on this, and we have this year, where those three individual accounts are accounting for $20 million out of the $24 million in new growth for personal property, 80%. Last year, the three accounts accounted for $15 million out of the $22 million, 67%. And prior year in fiscal '20, those three accounts were about $7.2 million out of the $14 million, so 50%. And back in 2019, the total personal property growth was only $13 million. And online, we don't have the statistics for that one. But you can see we're between 50s to 60s to 80s in those three accounts. So that's where we really need to keep it in back of mind when we're going through the budget process, when we're coming up with the new growth number that's part of the revenue source. And targeting that too high, targeting it too low, too low, we don't have funds to allocate all the services. Too high, and we don't meet that benchmark when we do this recap process, now mid-year, we could be looking to cut budgets and have special town meeting to go through that process. So averages, prior directors here, we've spoken about it for years, averages in this regard is not a common place to make and figure out the number. Looking at permits, looking at if they're truly done by December 31st, looking that we are utilizing a fair number, is what should be pulled together with a variety of departments, a variety of sources, and worked at improperly during the budget process. As I mentioned already, this year, we had to implement the new Department of Revenue blended rate approach for the utilities. Again, those three accounts had increases of over $10 million to their value. That was not new growth, but it is increasing their value, so that does aid in the distribution and the shift between all the relevant parties. We did have, as I said, almost $20 million still in growth for the year, but what they invested in fencing, certain styles of fencing around their facilities, those projects are not going to be done every year. So that's why that number, we really need to pay attention to and work on. Next in the packet, on page 20, we have the current levy limit. So you can see in Section 2, we have the $74 million number. And then further down toward the bottom of the page, we have a $78.7 million number, and that includes the 4.6 for the debt exclusion for the high school. With those forms submitted, we can go through the process that the state refers to as the Chapter 200, shifting the tax rate. As I mentioned earlier as well, with all the different changes, property values, we had the option this year to go up to 1.65. That is what's depicted on page 22, or the board's reference. Page 23 gives the historic view of all the different shifts and tax rates. Right now, back to 1995, most of the time in the last, you know, 10 years, we've been in that 50, 51, 52, 48 range. Some years, we could only go to 1.50. This year, we have a greater option, but as we talk in a few moments, that greater option really is not beneficial in this environment, and so we'll discuss what our recommendation is. Page 24 provides to the board, and those that are looking at any documents online, a breakout and the actual current calculation for the shift from 1.45 to 1.55. So you can see how each individual increment and what the impact is between the residential and then commercial, industrial, and personal property. Before I go through the averages, just to relate to the board, part of that, Chapter 200 and the whole tax rate calculation and the what-if scenarios, on that page, it does give you the single tax rate. And with a $78.7 million levy potential, this year's single tax rate would be $16.35.
Would you repeat that?
$16.35 would be the single tax rate. So page 25, we start to talk into what the impact is directly to that single-family residence. Last year, average value, $391,000. Tax rate was $15.10. That was approved, just over $5,900 before anything for the community preservation charge. We had a 1.48 shift. This year, again, we have over a $37,000 value increase. Average value is now around $428,258. And after our discussion in our vote Monday night of this week, which was a vote of 3 to 0 by the board, we are proposing to the Select Board the option of a 1.50 shift. That 1.50 shift calculates out to about $6,136, an average increase of $231, and then you still have the CPA about $70 on top of that. This is a 3.9% increase on this single-family from last year. Now, the single-family value increased 9.5%. And this tax allocation would be at 3.9%. Page 26 goes through and does the same process for the average industrial. Again, last year, $858,558, totaling $21,884. This year's average, $931,000, so, you know, a $73,000 value change. At the 1.50 shift, that would result in a $22,853 bill. So the increase is about $968, a 4.4% increase in their tax bill from last year. We've looked at a variety of scenarios. We can definitely bring some others up for the board and the public. At this point, just for some comparison, some of our surrounding communities do have their tax rate approved. Avon has a split tax rate. Their residential rate is $15.81. Their commercial, industrial, and personal property is $29.93. Sharon is a single tax rate community. They are at $19.75. Randolph, split rate, $13.65 residential, $26.40 on commercial, industrial, and personal Canton got their tax rate approved today, $11.35 on their residential, $24.18 on their commercial, industrial, and personal property. Those are the main pieces we wanted to, you know, present this evening. Again, I know some of the members had sent questions to us. I'll leave it up to the option of the Chair, and we'll look to answer any questions.
And Rick, did you have anything to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is really a math problem. A lot of this is all formula-driven. So, once we have an outside company come in and do the valuations of the properties in the town, then it really becomes a function of calculating most of this, and then presenting the data to the board to make a decision. So, we certainly have gone back and forth weighing what the shift might be, and it almost seems like, um, it's a significant effort to look at small increments, but how much do you shift away from the residential without really harming the commercial to some extent? And you do all of this with the backdrop, knowing that we already have a, um, an override for the high school, and now we're looking for another one for potentially the fire station, and then right behind that, the south school, and right behind that, you know, a police station and middle school. And so there's a lot to think about when you're doing these things. It's not just, you can't just do this in a phone booth and not really think about the broad consequences, so. Anyway, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Kathy Caton, who I know is down there doing all the grunt work every day and making sure that you guys get all the documentation together. And, you know, thank you, Kathy, for all your efforts down there as well.
Thank you.
All right, questions of the board?
When you were talking about the issue of the three properties with the personal property variability from year to year, I presume other communities are doing, experiencing the same thing. Is that correct?
Yes, absolutely. You know, they, again...
Are they seeing pretty much the same situation, or are they in different stages? I mean, we seem to be going up right now. Have they sort of gone up and gone back down, or...?
Yeah, I mean, that's one factor that now with this hybrid approach, depending on where you were in classification, where you were in, you know, your yearly cycle, not everyone has necessarily finished it. We haven't gone through and looked for information on other sites. Here, you know, we have a substation, and that has a bigger value. So, you know, do communities have one utility company, two utility companies? Do they have gas? You know, all those come into factor, and those are the main ones that we're looking at. So, it could be a piece that we could go dive deeper into, see if we can get specifics on it, see what the trends are. Once everyone finishes, there's 504 Hybrid, and we'll see if they start filing appeals for those values, like we had with Verizon years ago, where the methodology changed. We can, we can see what happens. But right now, we have those three. We've had that, our historic 50s, 60s, 80s, and the percentage of that in relation to personal property, if one of those doesn't have, you know, a $10 million increase, we don't have $250,000. don't have $250,000 to add to, you know, the growth that year. And that's the cusp that we're on. If we're targeting 800 and we're making 980, 180, that's, that's all the gap we have. We added 29 residential homes last year. We had 10 properties go exempt. So, you know, communities around this part of the Massachusetts community, we've built out, you know, how much can we go in certain areas? So that has another impact. Residential, lower value as far as how much is taxed, that dollar amount. Commercial, industrial, higher value, higher number tax amount, and you have the higher growth. So that's why, again, personal property, relying on three accounts with that amount of impact, it's, it's to be of concern when we're looking at things.
So it sounds to me like it's worth looking at a little bit deeper.
We need to continue some trends and see what's going on. Yeah, because again, we know that they're not going to replace a whole fencing system next year. If it's done, it's going to be there for a number of years. And so what else can they physically do to these locations to get that amount of value?
So even with the, with the same split as last year, both the residential and industrial would go up?
Yes, yeah.
And, and the residential would go up probably about half as much as the industrial would?
Yeah, so, the good is, and we talked about this a few months ago, where we took the two boards, you know, values and comparisons, and if we take our average, all of our eight properties put together, that average, we're only a couple thousand dollars off from the single-family average for the community. So we're a good representative set. If we did 1.48, the averages there, again, property values, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 14, 15% increase from last year. The bill increase, one is pretty much flat, almost dead-on, but then 2, 3, 4, 5, 9, and almost 10% increase. The industrial one will be a 3% increase. For every tick that we change, 1.50, starting there. If we go down to 1.49, there's more burden on the residential than there is on the commercial. And every tick one way or the other is about a half a percent. And so instead of being 3.9 and 4.4, we reverse that. And then if we went down to the 1.48, you'd be at 1.49 on the residential side, you know, so you'd be going to 4.9%. And then on the commercial, you'll be down to, you know, 3. So that's, that's where those numbers come out. And we talked for several hours on Monday night, saying, well, 1.52, if we do that, we're talking $1,200 increase on that average industrial. This is the year where we will see the potential of more abatements because there is nine months of valid data that they had the impact from the shutdowns and the restrictions from the pandemic. You know, this goes through 1-1 of 21. So this is all of calendar 20 for these values. And that's nine months that they have this issue.
I guess that's why I asked the question.
Not a problem.
What's that, Lou? Ms. Roberts?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, through you to the board, and hi, how is everyone doing? So my question is really, I guess, more of a dialogue, more of a what-if scenario. So, right now, we're waiting for, I say "we" because we the town, we're waiting for the DOR to approve your LA 4 and LA 13?
Yes, yes, the 13 would be first, so we have the growth.
So we have the growth. What's the likelihood that they would change your numbers, or disagree, or disapprove, or whatever the term is you want to use?
Yep.
So what's the likelihood, and what does that mean if they do?
Yep. There can definitely be changes to it. You know, today they were like, well, this particular thing that you listed for a growth, we're not considering that growth. Small, 30,000 in total, change to the bottom line, $1,000, $2,000. So that's not a problem. Breaking out and going through some of the personal property, you know, relisting them, that could change it a couple thousand the opposite way. Do we expect to go from 980 down to 800? Hopefully not. Do we expect to go from 980 to 960? Possibly, they could make those changes. So it's not significant, I don't think we're in jeopardy of not hitting a target in most circumstances, but we do need to have that approval of the growth in order to be able to have the final numbers for the levy limit.
Okay.
And we tried to change this the last couple of years, this being the second year. In years past, we would present to the board, once those forms were approved, but in most years, we never had all the rest of the financial in from the accounting side. Now, last year, this year, we're trying to have all those numbers in so that we're dealing with the final set, or we're dealing with, you know, a relatively small, couple thousand dollar change, hopefully in that aspect, to make it. But per their guidelines, we can close the public hearing. It is not recommended for the select board to take a vote on the exemption options or the shift option until that form is, is finalized.
Thank you. So, we are not required to make a decision, we can actually wait until we hear from the DOR before we make a decision, but what, but what you're saying is, once they do make a decision, it's not going to be a material change, so the number that we're looking at today is pretty close to-
Correct.
-what the final, okay.
Yes, yes. Even if they went, if they took off 700,000 of it, we still have 78 million that we need to raise through this process. 700,000, 78 million, you know, .01% type thing, it's not going to change the rate a penny or so. You know, but does that change anything else to the board to say 1.51, 1.49, 1.48? That's, that's the overall goal.
Just real quickly, as the chairman has indicated a couple of times here, it doesn't change the levy. It just shifts the, the, the who's paying for it, part of it. So the levy's going to remain the same, you know, no matter what in this case, so.
Yeah, but through you to Mr. Hill, we are still concerned with Proposition 2.5. This is a rare opportunity for us to discuss how these value, property values have really increased some, in some places, double digits. So if we're talking about Proposition 2.5, what does that really mean? These are unusual times, so we're just trying to wrap our arms around and really understand what that means to our total availability. Can you address that, Proposition 2.5, as it relates to this?
So the value aspect is sales data. And the 2.5 is what you're capped with, within that levy calculation. So it is last year's ending, plus the 2.5, plus growth, plus debt exclusions, overrides, to get to your max levy. This is why we, you know, we came to the board a month or so ago and said, values are increasing. We hope the residents don't expect that their taxes are only going to go up 2.5%. Because when you have a large shift in a value, yes, the rate comes down, but there are other factors in it. And that's why we put the number in there to say, at this shift, it's a 3.9% increase, or it's a 4.4% increase. Because, you know, everyone feels that we're in a state with 2.5 proposition that we can't increase by more than 2.5. But that's not always the case when you have growth and you have debt exclusions. Those are added to it to then give you that final number. And we're between that 3 and 4% potential increase for this fiscal year.
And then on a more immaterial note, but I would like to ask, early on in your presentation, you mentioned there was a change in methodology for personal property tax? And what was that change in? Then that leads me to, if you could restate, I think you said it before, how much outstanding personal property tax do we have? Is, how large is that receivable balance?
So, the change in methodology was just for the utilities.
Ah.
So Eversource, N-Star, National Grid, so gas or electric. And before, those utilities would follow a process. There's a form of list that they would file and show asset, depreciation, current value. The Department of Revenue felt that it wasn't the best statement of value, because you could fully depreciate something, but it's still in use, and it still has value. So there's always been an option in the law for a community to come up with their own value and to challenge that. And some of the larger communities had done so. And they saw 20, 30, 40% increases in those values. So after the review at the Department of Revenue side, they came up with this mixed, blended approach. We take the information from the company, what they provide on the formal list. We have a third party do an audit of those, and then they take 50/50 and put it together to come to a number. And that becomes our value. If they did make substantial changes to the plant, to the infrastructure, we have that as growth. That will still remain. But in this case, vendor A represents their value at $5 million. We do an audit, and we say it's $7 million. So now blended becomes $6 million. Without this process, we would have booked them at 5. With the process, we can now book it at 6. And so that million-dollar change in the value then helps the distribution between classes, helps the potential in the shift. It's not growth for that year, but the value increased, so they have more of the pie to
Thank you, I have no more questions at this point in time. I'm just processing, thank you.
Mr. Kaby?
I have a couple of questions. Before I do, I just want to say that, that I've always, you know, enjoyed when, when you've come to, to our meetings and where we've had joint meetings. We have a lot of competent boards, a lot of very smart people in government, but I, I really feel you guys like, you know, take the cake. You're extremely competent, and, and I, and I just always feel like I'm getting an education when you're here, so I wanted to express my, my thanks for that. I know it's complicated work, it's complex work. You've done, have continued to do a good job helping people like me understand this, and I really appreciate that, genuinely. So just a couple of questions, I just really kind of want to understand some, maybe some simple stuff, and then maybe some more relational things. So, start with the average assessment valuation of major classes. So you include single-family dwellings, condominiums, two-family dwellings, three-family dwellings, commercial properties, and then industrial properties. Under which of these categories does an apartment fall?
It just depends on what type, because there are different subsets, where if it's two to four, six or eight or more.
Yeah.
So that's where all those come in. So if you're looking at, if I find the LA 4 in the packet? Oh, yeah, that's the one. So, the LA 13 gives some descriptions next to side of them. So you see that condominium is a 102, two and three family is the 104 and 105, and then the multifamily has a range from 111 to 125, and it's based on the count of what they are.
Okay.
So stories, individuals, eight, 10, 12, they all fall into those different subsets.
Okay, so it doesn't fall under commercial properties?
Correct.
Okay.
It, it, there's the larger ones, like what was the lodge?
Yeah.
We have to calculate their value as a commercial income and expense approach, but they fall in the residential class. They take the residential rate for it.
Okay.
Most of us feel that that's, you know, a wrong way of doing it, but that's the way-
It trickles down to them anyway, so, so-
We've tried to, you know, the organization has tried to put in legislation and get some of those things changed, but it hasn't happened yet.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that very much. The, the next question I, I had is really comparison of pages 25 and 26. I think he did a really good job of explaining, you know, the change in value of properties, and also the change in the tax rate, and how it compares for industrial properties versus single-family or dwellings. We had some averages here, it was really, really helpful, and, and one of the things I, you know, I, I see is that there's a, in the case of the single-family home, we have an increase of 9.5% in their value. But the, but the increase in the tax rate is 3.9%. In, on the industrial, we see an increase of 8.5%, but, but a increase in the tax of 4.4%. So, I know there's a lot of numbers thrown out, but, but the ratio of your, the increase to your tax rate, the increase of your tax rate to the increase in your property value, I would have assumed that'd be, to be closer to 1:1, right? That, that if your property increases 2%, then the value of it, and then you'd have to pay, you know, that, that, that amount. But in both of these cases, it's closer to 50%. Property would increase by, you know, $10, but they, but their, you know, but their, or 10%, say, but their proportion of taxes that have to be paid are, are half of that. But in this case, industrial is, is closer to a little bit over a half, 5.2, and, or sorry, it should be 52, 52, or 0.52. And in the case of personal property or, or, sorry, family dwellings, it's 41% or, or so. In the, as you guys are looking through these questions, and I, I'm sure that you're, there's a number crunching, but there's also, especially with the shift, you know, a sense of, of looking out to the future to see, you know, where's this money coming from? Who, who has to pay it? Is it going to be, you know, families who are, you know, maybe property-rich, but, you know, the income isn't there to pay the taxes? Or, you know, is, our business is hurting? So there's an element where you're trying to, to find like a fairness, I'd say, which is a little bit less mathematical, and I think a little bit more humane, right? When you see these, these differences in the proportion, the ratio of, of tax increase to property value increase, does that like, is that something, you know, you're aware of, you kind of think about in this, or, or is that, did I stun you with something you've never?
Nope. No, you're, you're absolutely on point.
Yeah, okay.
And that's the part of a difficulty in a certification year and what last year was.
Yeah.
Because things were selling so high above. In this whole process, there are some sections that we never talk about, because they get very deep into the values. You have a sale of a house, you have a neighborhood, you have the entire town. In the interim years, as well as in the certification year, we have to have those values within a range. So we have to be between 90 and 110% of those current average sales. So- So, your property could have gone up another 7%. So everything that you spoke about so far, that's been taken in consideration along the way. Because we see a value of a house of $300,000 that just sold for $400,000. And now if you start to work all that back, well, jeez, I'd have to raise that value, you know, to 375,000 to be within the parameters that we need to.
Yeah.
This is still continuing in 2021. And so for next year, we may again see an increase in residential values. And then if that occurs again, now where does that impact the rates? So, the shift has the impact on those because we take from one and we bring to the other.
Yeah.
That's part of the offset. That's why you can have a property value increase by 15%, but the taxing only increase by 9%.
Yeah.
So the shift does some of that allocation. Those value ranges that we have to fall in, that does some of that allocation. Seeing where the next six months of sales have been, because we're looking at last calendar year, seeing where they are right now, knowing that they're going to go up again, trying to build some of that into the current value. So there are a continuous set of moving variables.
Yeah.
And yes, it'd be nice to say, well, my property went up in value by 10%, my bill should go up by 10%. That you'd get more if you were at a single rate. Because you'd have that, just one to one, it's the same for everyone. But the shift in those ranges give us this calculation and give us that difference where you can have a 4% or 5% increase in your value, but have very little positive or negative change to your actual tax for the next year.
The shift, though, doesn't account for all of this, right? Because we are talking about shifting from residential to industrial, right?
Commercial, industrial, and personal property.
Okay.
The same rate affects all three. So if you look at that chart.
Yeah.
The first column is one, but the other three columns are the same. So that's why 19.8% is what commercial, industrial, and personal property account for in the value, total value of the town. 80% is for the residential. And so every time we go through that shift, and go another tick, and go another tick, we're taking that 80 and turning it into 70 or 60. And we're taking that 20 and turning it into 30 or 40. And that's where it starts to balance or change that balance from one side to the other.
You might have this handy, and perhaps I might not be understanding the consequences of this question, but if, if the ratio for these is, is closer both to a half, single-family and industrial, I would then presume that, and they make up a good portion of the town, that there'd have to be some other area that was taking a greater than, you know, 100% increase in their taxes as a ratio of tax increase to property values.
Yeah, and some of the larger commercial, if they didn't have as large of a change in their value.
Yeah.
Would have that higher percentage. But again, we go from, you know, a Target and Ikea at millions of. We have properties with TIFs that segment it between tax and what goes into the MWA fund in water. So that's why it's, it's difficult to give any type of average on those particular ones. Where industrial is a good variable. Because here's a building, you know, they do some sales front, they have a place that's industrial, and, and we know what it is. But the other ones, the, the numbers are just so fluctuating from one location to another location that it's not a good end. But yes, there would be the utilities that we talked of, those 504s. An increase in $10 million in your value, just that alone just added $25,000 to their bill.
Yeah.
Not even considering what else is factored in for the normal changes. So they, they definitely go beyond that 19% in total, and they start to creep up.
The, the last question I have is, should be just the softball, but I want to really understand this. You have talked a number of times about the average value of different types of properties. When you use the word average, what exactly it is that you're referring to? Is it the mean value or is it the median value?
It is just the true average. So we have 6,698 single-family homes, and that class code value is, you know, $4 trillion. It's just divided out, and there's your average.
Okay, so.
It's not the mean or the median. It is just the mathematical average.
One of it, has to be one of them, right? So it has, it is the total number of value of houses divided by the number of houses. That's the mean.
It's just the average.
Well, average has, there's three different things that refer to an average. So, but, but so I've, the calculation is total value divided by the number of properties. That's, that's the mean. The reason I, I ask is because mean has a tendency of being disproportionately impacted by outliers, right? If, if one person builds a house for $12 million, that average, now, that mean, now becomes significantly skewed, even if everybody else has $200,000 houses.
Right, yeah.
Now the average is, average, even though there's only one house that's over $1 million, now everyone has an average value of, you know, $500,000 houses, where median tends to, to adjust for, for that kind of, kind of thing.
Yeah, we don't, we don't take the full 6,000 of them dumped out, sorted by, and then find that true middle point that is 50 above and 50 below.
Yeah.
But again, taking us as the examples, and all of us average together, is only a couple thousand off of that average.
Yeah.
And we do range, you know, as you're speaking, of twos and threes and fours and fives.
Yeah.
And we have all the different neighborhoods and all the different aspects for it. But again, if it, if you'd like to see in the future what the true mean is.
No, no, no. I was just curious.
We can dump it, but yeah.
Just want to make sure I understood what you, what I was reading. Yeah, it's, yeah, I was just wondering if, are you aware of any outliers in the toll? Anything that sort of fits outside by, you know, more than a standard deviation or something?
I think we have a nine million thousand now.
Okay, so it's all pretty, pretty close.
Yeah. There's only a small amount of eight million.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. I really appreciate your time and efforts on this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. KB. Mr. Carrara, any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Jutus. It seems as though the residential values that are homes are selling at a driving rate.
Yes, that, that is correct, because part of the process, we have to evaluate actual sales in the year, you know, prior to fiscal year, to go through and calculate that.
If, if I could ask people at home, if you're not speaking, to please mute your microphones, because we're getting some background conversation.
I was glad that you explained the scenario about how everybody thinks two and a half is all you can go, but when you have the value of the house and you add on the, the other factors that it will bounce higher. I feel as though with the way the market is driving, when our hands are tied, if we back, they split back, it's, it's going to devastate the residential side. If we go higher, it's, it's going to pound the industrial. And I'm not so sure that I agree with the numbers that the industrial is, is doing as well as it is, because when we talked about it before, it was pretty flat. I, I don't see it, you might see it for sales, I guess, but I don't see it. I see more stuff for sale, and hanging on signs falling over, and, you know, there's a lot of desperation in commercial and industrial, especially on big apartments. So you're probably going to see them coming, begging for money to be paid. It's, when we, when I was on the board before, we did the two biggest splits up. It was 1.72 and 1.75. Thank God that it's the way it is now. Are we going to, are we going to have to vote on this tonight and say no?
Correct. We are waiting for the approval of the growth in the 13, LA13, and the LA4. So you can close the hearing, and it would be at a subsequent meeting to actually vote these items.
I would think we have to continue the hearing. We can close the open public hearing, but we have to continue.
You are correct, yes. You close the public portion, and then you'd keep the rest open.
Right. All right, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. With the board having their questions, we have, you, Shakur, Shakem, Mr. Gito?
I'm sorry. I didn't think of this. I would imagine that the one and two-story houses are probably, or two-family houses. I would, was somebody asking a question?
Yeah, anybody speaking at home, please wait until you're recognized.
I would imagine, I think that's Stan. I would imagine that the one and two-family homes are owned by people in Stoughton. I would imagine that many of the industrial properties and perhaps many of the commercial properties are not owned by people in Stoughton. And so what, what we're looking for is, in addition to fairness and everything else, we may get a little bit of income from other communities. And do you have any information on, on what properties, what, what percentage would be owned by Stoughton residents and, and other?
That goes back to what we had the, or I had the brief conversation on, discussion to the board here, of the residential exemption. That we'd have to have the actual information of owner-occupied houses. And we have 6,698. Do we say it's 5,000?
I wasn't thinking of the 6,698. I was thinking of the other 4,000 that are big apartments and commercial. And I guess I was wondering about those.
Yes, again, when you're in those, you don't have, because that has to be occupied as well. That wouldn't fall into some of the class exemptions, and we would have to send correspondents out, get the details to fill in anything else.
Don't we send out tax bills every quarter?
Yes, but it doesn't, just because there's a name on it, we don't have the validation of, you know, yeah. You could have a trust, and then depending on the trust documentation is, it may or may not be applicable.
I guess if I were looking at it, I would look at it from the perspective of approximations as opposed to exact information, just to get a sense of where we might be going in that regard. And I was wondering if, if that kind of information was available. Thank you.
Just a quick note, not all of those commercial industrial properties are sole proprietorships, right? So they're corporations or, you know, limited partnerships or, you know, all kinds of various, different types of ownership. So figuring out who is the owner-owner might take some digging in some cases, so. But I understand your point. To let the surrounding areas or the people living outside the community also share in our joy.
Okay, thank you. Members of the public, anybody in the audience have any questions? Mr. Vendrusko? Yeah, if actually, if you could just borrow one of, if you can borrow the mic there and ask a question. Deb, just mute, mute everybody at home now.
Mr. Zoll?
Yeah.
My question is, the real estate is going sky high.
Is, sir, is your mic on?
Is that lit up green, Peter, the microphone?
No, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I can't hear half of you guys. Especially that side. These guys, you can hear them.
You'll have the people at home here.
I don't know if these guys ain't close enough or they got lousy mics. But anyways, my question is, the prices are going sky high on real estate, and it's going to bust. And then you're going to have people, a house that's worth, they bought $500,000, it's worth $250, get back to its normal price after the crash, and people are going to be walking away from mortgages. But this happened before in 2008, when the real estate market busted, and the taxes still went up. So I question that. Do you value everything crashed? And why do real estate taxes go up? And my, the answer was, they're going to buy the houses they sold. So I'm sure them houses they sold weren't the average person's house. They had to be in a high 500, 600,000 or a million. And they're the only people that could afford to buy a house in that market. And maybe that house was worth a million. They got it for $800,000 because it was going down. So my question is now, when this collapses, are we going to get a break on the real estate? It was the last time we didn't get it.
So you go back to the beginning concept of town meeting sets the budget. And if town meeting still keeps a budget at $80 million, $100 million?
Yeah, but they're going by, they're going by your recommendations on what the, what the real estate property is worth.
We, that's right. The value of the property times some rate at some potential shift needs to come to and balance to what was approved at town meeting. So back to what you were saying, 2007, 2008, and this goes to Mr. Carrera's statement. That's when we had a 175 shift. We put as much to the commercial as possible. 2008, it was still a 1.69 shift, still trying to get as much to the commercial as possible.
Yeah, but they, as I remember the assessor saying at the time, it's because they set the rate on the cost of the real estate that was being sold in a town. But like I said, the real estate being sold in a town wasn't the average home. It was a big-money homes that people with money could afford. And it was probably a million-dollar home, and they got it for 700 or 800, so they got a good deal. So half a dozen houses, the town decided what the shift had to be on half a dozen houses, which wasn't a fair assessment.
No, and now the process is a bit different. We have interim adjustments that are done every single year. We have a five-year cycle instead of a three- or 10-year cycle. And back then, the concept was you kept the numbers the same for a long period of time, and then you had a large jump. We are always, with our current setup, 18 months behind in values. We're setting the fiscal '22 tax rate in December of '21, but we're looking at all sales that happened back in '20. So we're always behind in that regard. And yes, the taxes will probably not go down. The shift will help a bit. And it goes back to town meeting, setting a budget, and having to fund that budget. Because there is no, unfortunately in the current layout, there is no negative growth. There is no negative in a value for it. So we add new growth every year. We add two and a half to it every year from the prior year's calculation. If the values go down, well, that's going to drive your tax rate up. But it's not changing what the available levy is.
Well, I think it's unfair, because by law, you can go up two and a half. I think it's unfair because by law you can go up 2.5%, but then you take, uh, new growth, say it's 7%, so now you're at 9.5%. That's a big jump. And then next year, that budget starts off from where it left off at 9.5% and it's gonna be jumping up that amount every year. So it just, uh, it doesn't work out right, especially for the elderly people. And I'm asking this board to seriously think, to give the residential side a break, because a lot of people, you know, I talked to, they just can't afford it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vintresco. Anybody else from the public that's in the audience here at Town Hall like any questions? Ms. Walsh.
Hello?
Can someone respond to this?
Well, I was trying to do the hall first and then go remote. Yeah, um, Mr. Zoll, I can hear you. Uh, we're just trying to finish recognizing people in the hall. After this comment is received from the person in the hall, we will reach out to you for your comment as you are a member of the assessors. Just be with us. Ms. Walsh.
Yes, this is a vastly attended public hearing, all two of us. Thank you for coming, Mr. Vintresco. So I don't appear to be the lone, well, crying in the wilderness. Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Fox Street. I'm, I guess I should have majored in math. I only minored in math. But, uh...
Mr., Mr., Mr. Zoll, please wait. Uh, we know that you're trying to get through. We have a question that's being asked in the audience here at Town Hall. As soon as that's done, I will recognize you.
Hi.
Thank you.
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Fox Street. And I realize that, um, like Mr., um, the previous speaker, we've both lived long enough to know that there never will be a time when the taxes will go down. But the increases are just remarkable. And for those of us who are living on a pension or Social Security, they're not keeping up. And if I've read this packet, and thank you for having enough of them available for all two of us, it's going up, well, another $300. We're talking, in the case of my teacher's pension, and because I retired early, I don't get a full pension, we're approaching five months where the entire pension is going to my real estate taxes. I live in the same house I've lived in since I was nine months old, and it seems like I'm being penalized for that. It's nice that some people have decided to sell their property and rake in the big bucks. But for the 15% to 18% of the homes in Stoughton that are occupied by one senior, this is a crushing burden. I'm eligible for food stamps and for fuel assistance. And I will never apply for those things because my grandparents, when they came to this country, promised they'd never be a burden. But this is really getting to be too much. Thank you.
Okay. Yes.
He has to unmute himself.
All right, Mr. Zoll, please unmute yourself. And if you have any questions or anything you'd like to add to the presentation, you're being recognized at this point.
Hello?
Mr. Zoll, go ahead with your questions.
Hi. Uh, this, sorry, I'm a member of the, uh, board of the chair. I'm unable to see Adam's meeting tonight, but I've listened to the whole program of most of the hearings. I want to, uh, thank particularly the chair for the day's preparation and also the, uh, for consideration, whatever, about the course, whatever they could do. I look forward to, uh, watching the comments go over. Also thanking the, um, staff and our, uh, board members who've sat here on. Thank you, Mr. Mullin.
Thank you, Mr. Zoll. Is there anybody, uh, joining us remotely that would like to be recognized? Please show your hand or speak up and identify yourself for the record, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Will look at the calendar.
Hi, Bill.
I'm a little bit surprised. You know when you might be voting on this, we're getting into critical timing right now. We're gonna get the tax bills online. It's something very frustrating.
Well, my, my goal would be as soon as we have a, a decision that's been made and I'm notified that that decision has been made, that there's no problem that the board couldn't hold a remote meeting that would take, just quick enough to take that vote.
You think it might be next meeting, Mr. Chairman?
If we have the, as soon as we have the, um, the decision back, it'll be posted within 48 hours to meet the open meeting law and we will vote it, Bill.
Okay.
Okay, is there anybody else from home, uh, from home, joining us remotely, would like to be recognized? Please identify yourself for the record. This will be my last call for anybody that's joining us remotely. If you would like to be heard at this public hearing, please identify yourself for the record. Okay, hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion is made, motion made by Mr. Gito, second by Ms. Roberts, to close the public hearing portion of this meeting. On the vote for that, Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Share votes in favor. Okay, so with that public-
Motion to continue the, uh-
Second.
Have to continue this.
Yes, yeah, we'll continue this, this open meeting to the, a date when we have been notified by the DOR or by the assessors that they have the answer from the DOR.
So moved.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Gito, second by Mr. Cavey. On that motion, any questions from anyone? All right, on the vote, Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Share votes in favor. Okay, so we will, as soon as we get that notification, Lou, you can give me a call and I'll speak with Deborah and we will get that meeting posted ASAP, get it done to the quickest moment we can. And that meeting, just so we'll say it up here now, uh, unless there's some critical need for another issue, that would be, my intention would be to have that be remote and that would be the only issue that we take up. You know, to make it, you know, so maybe we can do it in an afternoon or something where everybody can jump in and-
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, so with that, um, there is no other meet, uh, issues on our agenda?
Mr. Chairman, uh, town meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're right. The second time I've done that, I've missed that one. And that was-
That would be bad.
That's okay, though. Look at, you see Bob, look at him. More hair fell out when I said, when I said we're gonna move on. Okay, Bob, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would you have a commission, Mr. Chairman? I believe the members of the select board have received my request to uphold the role of all 2021 special time meetings, please, before you.
Yes, we have everything here, Bob.
All right, would you have permission, I'd like to read it to the record, sir?
Go right ahead.
Yeah, it'd just take about five minutes. Dear members of the select board, Having determined that a careful deliberation that is not possible to safely assemble the town meeting representatives and entrusted members of the public in common attention and in light of the practical rules and strengths intended upon this meeting, approving the need to set a dashboard, this is the formally requested thing, December 6, 2021 meeting, to help with the role participation. Including, but not limited to, the need to the video or telephone conversation platform Zoom to Stoughton media access. As you are all aware, the number of COVID-19 cases in Stoughton, even B and C services that steadily rise, further varying the size of home size and size, additional risk equals to use a vaccinated individual is not yet known for certain. For that reason, I very wanted, very much wanted to protect the upcoming town meeting. And we are sure such actions will be appropriately protected by the government of the town meeting. You have a specific, also create a significant risk to spread of COVID-19 jeopardizing someone's positive attributes to move on, including the opportunity to spend the holidays with others. The meeting will be conducted using Zoom, Zoom platform used at previous town meetings and the ten days of attendance, which we have previously preferred to appropriate town staff and senior clients to cuddle, nurse, or disability staff. I further certify that A, that work of the towns on each record, the test of plan to the upcoming town meetings, with the guide to the Zoom platform. And B, platform status secondly enables the town meeting to be conducted in the same manner that this meeting encouraged in person and in physical location, and according to the operational and functional requirements of the law. As was previously done, I have and will be consulting the town ID personnel, commissioning disability employees to take the test of need, board health, as well as the town manager, the select board, and clients, to ensure that we have a plan of effectively and efficiently accommodate all those wish participants. On the next page, uh, we will, we continue to work more closely as a town to bear this still fresh challenge, not the end of the whole town meeting. To ensure that all representative of the town meetings receive all of the information, we are once again requiring that all town meeting representatives will immediately forward an email address to the council or update them during the change, so we communicate quickly and efficiently. If trading is needed, we'd be in touch with the town for as soon as possible, so we can ensure that persons who are involved. We will address trading as efficiently as possible, send out notice of soon, these plans. Be reminded of, as we indicated with the connection with the prior town meeting meetings held remotely, be mindful that people have different levels of vulnerability, comfortable Zoom. And with computers generally, we will be providing support services to all that need them. So the representative will be unable to access, uh, a computer or phone participation. We ask that you notify the council immediately, so we can ensure all, to ensure the ultimate manner of participation. And confident that we can hold it successfully, the role of the town meeting, everyone's help and commitment to be, to be, being fit and informed and perhaps also of features. If the select board approves this request, I will really issue a declaration of reset and continuance, changing the location of the town meeting in Stoughton High School to the online platform. I would ask therefore, if the request is approved, that the following actions be taken. Post on municipal website and the first portal to the word of Town Hall, as well as, well, excuse me, as well as any location that is the largest posted. This request, declaration of reset and continuance, will hold state concerning the movement of issues. Communicate to public and representatives of the meetings in any way or form that is appropriate, including, but not limited to, email to recent chairs and accident before the information of recent matters, email representatives directly, using the reverse 911 system to ensure that all residents are informed of the matter. And include this information of links to, um, list service or social media sites operated by the town. I look forward to your favorable response to this request in the interest of protecting public health and safety. And I am available to assist in any way that is best taken to provide those representatives of the town meetings. Respectfully submitted, Dr. Mullin Jr., Tom Moll. Uh, Mr. Chairman, if you have any questions, the moderator is ready. I'll certainly, I'll carry on to Adam.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Hang loose there, because I'm gonna start with Mr. Carrara. Do you have any questions of the moderator, Scott?
No, I, I largely commend his, uh, in his, um, endeavors to change this because this, this COVID stuff is already in four states and they think two more to come apart. So I, as much as I would destroy the deal with everybody, we seem to be falling right back into it again, so we'll get it done. Thank you, Mr. Mullin. Thank you.
Mr. Cavey, any questions?
Uh, I don't have any questions. I, I would also like to just, uh, uh, thank the moderator for, uh, you know, really looking out for the town in general. The, the importance of getting together, doing this in person, uh, really can't be, uh, overemphasized, uh, the efficiency of it, but also, you know, this is the nature of, of this type of government, is that, you know, there's a reason why we're all getting together and not just mailing in our votes, uh, that we're, we're showing up in person and, and working through the problems of the town for the coming years. And, uh, so I definitely appreciate the idea that, you know, he, he wanted to have it be in person. I thought that was a, a great thing. Facts changed. Uh, we know things we didn't know, even a week ago. And, uh, and so it's, uh, it's definitely disappointing, but on the other hand, I entirely support his decision on this. And I appreciate the work you've been doing, uh, on behalf of, of all the town meeting representatives and the town as a whole. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cavey. Appreciate your comments.
Ms. Roberts?
Yeah, through you, uh, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Mullin, I appreciate the fact that as new information comes in, you are nimble to reconsider a decision, and I support you 100% with this change. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts.
Mr. Gito?
Uh, yes. Mr. Mullin, as a moderator, I presume that you will be contacting all of the town meeting representatives? Is that correct?
Yes.
I'm, I'm just looking, when you say, if the select board approves the request, I will immediately issue a declaration. Uh, and I would ask therefore, if the request is approved, that the following actions be taken. And I presume that you're, you're participating in those actions. I guess that's really where I'm going. It's... Thank you.
You will have a little call, thank you.
Excuse me.
Have a good one.
Thank you.
I, I can't get it very much closer than this. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, I do.
There you go. You have indicated that, I, I think you answered my question earlier on. That'll be fine. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Madam Town Manager?
Yeah, I just want to echo the sentiments. I know people appreciate the fact that Mr. Mullin had a very difficult decision because it's challenging you exactly to keep everybody happy, circumstances are changing very quickly. But I also think people should know how much work went involved. It's a courage to make the change, but also a huge amount of work that Mr. Mullin has committed. He's been at Town Hall a huge amount of time. He's worked side-by-side with triches, he's been at my office, he's worked with town attorneys. It's not simple, just switching it over. And so while I do all appreciate the fact that he made this decision, perhaps against even some people's wishes, but what he believes is the best for just the community, not to disenfranchise anybody. While we would love to be there, it's, um, in fact, it's easier to present in person, uh, the risks to the public or the making people make some choices whether they can come vote for their health. It is not really a fair choice right now, particularly given what's happening nationwide. But again, I just want to let people know, people watching, the moderator started off, so that's not here, I'm sorry. I, I'm not sure people realize, and I know I did not until I was in a position in a, in a town meeting form of government like this, to know how much work goes into this, let alone to come into it during a pandemic, seeing it for two years. So, uh, I just want to thank Mr. Mullin for making this work and making this happen. It's not easy. So many of these things, they were relying on account happening or happening, he could keep him willing to make this happen.
Thank you, Dr. Mullin. Let me just add, we'll work with you to get the word out even more that we're not working on the reverse 911, electronic signs, emails. Emails are going out very, you know, subject to, you know, approvals of the select board, obviously. And whatever else your team would suggest or recommend, I assume we will do whatever is needed.
Yeah, we, uh, we've already put it out on the town prior, Facebook, it'll be out on the web. We, the grade that we would use for reverse 911 for this, we use that on a very limited basis. A lot of communities almost try bold too often of it. But we feel this is important now so that if there's a question ever down the road about moving it like this, it is absolutely very clear that we made full use of every resource possible to help.
Thank you, Dr. Mullin. Appreciate it.
Okay, any other questions of the moderator? With that, now I can say that... What's that? This part, I mean-
This isn't a public hearing.
No, it, it, so with that, um, I guess we'll close the meeting, but we will not adjourn it as- as this meeting is open until we...
Do we not have to vote to...
Oh, that's right, yeah, you're right.
I move that we accept the recommendation of the moderator to, to change the form of the town meeting from in-person to remote. Is that the proper wording?
Well, in accordance with this presentation that he read into the record.
Yes, in accordance with the presentation that he read into the record. Thank you.
All right, motion made by Mr. Gito to support the request of the moderator as presented and read into the record for the change of venue for our town meeting, seconded by Select Board Member Scott Carrara. Is there any questions on the motion? Hearing none on the vote. Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
And Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Chair votes in favor as well. All right, Bob, thank you for, you know, doing all the slag work and all your hard work there, and, you know, just, it's, it's good that we're, we've got to watch out and stay up to the way this, this pandemic is hitting us, and let's hopefully...
Well, like you said, Mr. Chairman, thank you all for the influence by the board. The town meeting is proud of it. We all have worked, we have spent, this town, they were all, and, and, really, they all have been in the town hall, and it's true.
That's right. Great words there. Okay, so...
Motion to adjourn.
Well, we can't adjourn the meeting, we'll hold it open. Well, no, we can actually just stop the new meeting, right?
We can adjourn this meeting.
Yeah, we can adjourn this, yeah, adjourn this meeting or just close it.
We, we didn't adjourn the other one.
Right, right. So, yeah, the, okay. All right, so with that, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Cavey, second, Ms. Roberts, to adjourn the meeting. Mr. Gito, on the vote?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. Thank you all, good night. Thank you for joining us.
Good night.
Good night, John Boy.